Don't have to wait for the picture? Yes, we are. Are we good? Okay, so let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first, everybody.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is the October 7th Planning Board meeting. It is the bewitching hour of 6:30. And if we start off on our agenda, let's look at board business. Let's start with A, any public, any board member updates? Anybody do anything this month or meet with anybody? Hannah?
I went to CPC, excuse me, I went to CPC boot camp. So got to learn a lot more about what the CPA is all about and what our CPC does, which includes approving, reducing, recommending, or reserving money.
Community Preservation Act.
Act, right, the Community Preservation Act, and we have our Community Preservation Committee.
Mission, right. Violet? Jeff?
The Transportation Committee met, and they went over, I wasn't able to attend the whole meeting because we had our little retreat. But they are still, I think, ably helmed by Gary La Croix, who is trying to pass along his leadership to someone else at the moment.
Has anybody stepped forward?
Yes, he has someone in mind.
Oh, good.
Jane?
Littleton Station Committee and Ampick are kind of on hold until after town meeting, so we'll reconvene then.
And Affordable Housing Trust, we just did our regular basis. I think everybody's kind of holding off for this, gearing up for the fall town meeting. Anyway, thank you all. Let's do minutes next. Do we have any issues with the minutes for September 7th and September 9th?
I have a question on September 9th. Under item number two, which is the public hearing for 550 King Street on the change of proprietorship. So it doesn't say anywhere on here who the new property owner is, and so I was just thinking that should be a part of this. Just adding up.
Okay. Anyone else have any other issues with it? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the September 2nd and September 9th meetings with that correction.
I still move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then in addition, I was able to finish up the minutes from September 28th and September 30th. I don't know if anybody's looked at those yet or not, but I posted those on the agenda in case you were.
Any public input? Anybody want to take a shot at us while you've got 10 or 15 minutes? Anybody?
10 or 15 minutes to take shots?
Yeah, well, 12 minutes anyway. We might extend it if you have a good point. Anybody? I guess not. Okay.
So on the September 30th notes, if we're going to be approving them, I wanted to say that the adjournment time was actually 8:15, not 9 o'clock.
Okay. All right. When's our next meeting after this, Ma? This might as well get board business out of the way.
So the first Thursday in November, I believe it is the 4th.
Okay. Unless we have to do something before town meeting, but.
Right, unless you have another meeting.
Excuse me, as it is right now, we're going to meet the 4th of November. Does anybody have any problem with that?
4th of November.
We talked about meeting a little early. It is.
Start at 6:00 PM?
Does everyone still want us, can you?
I can do it.
So if we tell you at 5:30, you'll be here for six?
Just, yes.
We have to start calling you at like quarter of?
Yeah.
Why don't we say the 4th?
Yeah, the 4th. So yeah, send us a note to remind, well, send me a note to remind me.
Six, okay.
So we're, I'm going to jump backwards to the minutes for just a second.
Okay.
Prepared to do the, approve the minutes from September 28th and September 30th. That was the site, meeting at the site and retreat.
Did you note on the plan, on the minutes that it was extremely wet that night?
I did not mention the rain, no.
Do you have any issues with the, as they're written? Since you're probably the only one that's like that.
Just that time change, that's it.
Okay. All right, does anyone want to make a motion that we approved the September 28th or the minutes from our retreat? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What do you want us to raise our hands?
I don't, thank you, I'm good.
Yeah, you can hear us all through the masks. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for your help. It's good to get all caught up with those.
So Mark, did you, would you like to talk a little bit about the priorities from the retreat? I know they're in the minutes for folks to read, but.
Sure. Okay. Would you?
Do you want to see it?
No, why don't you read it to me?
I don't know if I'm reading the last episode.
I give up, I have brain of eyes, so I will. Okay, retreat agenda. We ask questions like, why did we donate our time to the Planning Board? What priorities do we have for the upcoming year? What lines, are the lines of communication open? Is the chairman doing a fantastic job leading us as we move forward in the coming years? And I think that's it. But no, basically.
He had that last one in there.
I think it was in there. We spoke about the projects that we have in front of us right now and moving forward and making, making sure that we're a little more, we made sure the residents are, know exactly what's going on a little sooner than sometimes they do. Now, what else have we talked? We basically talked about amongst ourselves about how we go about Planning Board and spoke a little bit about the board being more important than the five members that are on it and acting that way and making sure that the best interests in the town of Littleton are taken care of, not our personal opinion shouldn't outweigh what's best for the town of Littleton. That was kind of my take on it. What else? You guys want to talk about, what else have we talked about that you think we should share with everyone else?
I think there's bullet points on there that speak to what the priorities are for the rest of the year.
Am I missing something?
Okay.
Well, I don't, no, I don't, this is just the regular agenda, there's no, this isn't the minutes, that's not the minutes, that's the agenda that you gave me.
Well, maybe it's these four things here.
King Street Common Rezoning, permitting for 550 King Street, Littleton Station Rezoning, and Transfer of Development Rights.
Yes, there you go.
That was it? That's all you wanted on me? You couldn't say that? Okay, all right.
Sure.
All right, so we're talking, well, obviously, King Street is before us right tonight. Permitting for 550, the redevelopment of King Street, Littleton Station, which we'll be addressing in the fall, in the spring, and trying to get the band back together to try to work on transfer of development rights. We did speak of those, and we talked about those being issues that, once we get further along in the year, next year, that we'll be working on.
For the record of all you people here, the transfer of development rights came up because this would have been something that could have been used at 550 King to generate money for conservation. It's a tool that we don't have.
Yeah, we did, and it's funny, we did speak about when we, when Mike Rentercott and Jerry were working on it, that site was one of the, the transfer sites, one of where the development rights was descending. But since we don't have anything in place, we never have a chance to finish yet, it's gonna be a little late on that one. All right, that was it, that's all you, that was your powder puff, that was it? Okay, all right. And I know we're, actually, the retreat went really well, it was, it was nice to have a frank, open discussion with everybody. I think we all got a better understanding and feeling where each one of us is coming from, I think, and why we're on the board, because it does take a lot of time, to be honest. We don't do it in a vacuum, you know, especially getting soaked in rat, like rats the other night. We should have got Peo, uh, the Polly umbrellas for that, you know? Now that I think about it, at least, you know? It's such, such an animal actually exists, but anyway. Okay. We'll just get a couple more minutes before Robinson Road. Do we have people on?
Well, I have a question about, do I need to recuse myself for this? No, we're, we're, I mean, you, are, are you taking a vote on this?
We're voting to send this to.
But you're, you're not in the district that's being.
No, this is about the 25 Robinson.
Robinson Road, correct. It's my understanding that you do not need to recuse yourself.
I mean, I've been recusing myself about it.
We're firm the application, yes. But this is Planning Board's recommendation, well, it'll be the Planning Board's public hearing on the zoning bylaw itself, taking the input and discussing among yourselves. And then after that, the board would vote to recommend, make a recommendation at town meeting.
Right, okay.
It's my understanding that you would not need to recuse yourself if you're more comfortable doing so, that's.
Oh, I, I'm fine not recusing myself, but I just want to do it properly.
I concur with what you said.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable not recusing yourself, I don't think anyone on the board.
Oh, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone on the board have a problem with?
No, I don't.
Do you? Yeah? All right, see, it's by the clock of dawn, just about, it's 6:45.
Well, I have the hearing notice, I can start with that.
Sure, we'll just start with that.
The town of Littleton Planning Board will hold public hearings on Thursday, October 7, 2021, starting at 6:45 PM to consider zoning bylaw amendments as described below, sponsored by the Planning Board, according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. 6:45 PM, rezone 25 Robinson Road, Matthew 7, Parcel 20-0, from Residence R District to Village Common, VC District. Then at 7:15 PM, King Street Common Zoning District. This proposed new zoning bylaw would rezone 550 King Street, Matthew 8, Parcel 10-0, from the current mix of industrial A, industrial B, village common, and business zoning to a new King Street Common Zoning District. The King Street Common Zoning District would allow comprehensive redevelopment of the site to allow a mix of uses, including commercial, retail, office, and multifamily residential, including senior housing. The full text of the proposed bylaws and amendments are on file with the town clerk and Planning Board offices, and can be viewed during their office hours or online at the town website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated or provide written comments by October 5, if possible. Then it goes on to say that this will be in person, and details were posted on the agenda last week, and actually, we were able to post the Zoom information about a week and a half ago.
Okay.
Any questions, feel, feel, call Planning Board officer, email me. Signed by Bartlet Harvey Clerk.
Okay, so.
No, I was just asking Bartlet, sorry.
Great job, Bartlet. The pros, unbelievable, you really do a good job. So just a brief overview of what we're talking about here. So we've had meetings with the residents in the neighborhood, we've seen renditions, and they're all up on our website of the proposed redesign of the common using the Form Based Code. And this parcel, and just for a brief history, this parcel and the parcel that was on the other end of the zoning district up at the Acton Toyota were originally part of, I'm going to have to take this off, because that, part of the original article that was before the town for the, for the Form Based Coding. The issue was that we thought it was going to muddle the water too much when we did this a year and a half ago, so we took the parcels out and we just left it in the business district. Since that time, it's, it's come, it's, it's resurfaced because in order to do a good job with what was being proposed for the redevelopment of the common, that parcel is needed to be in the, in the Village Common District or the old Village Common District or the Form Based Coding District, so that's why it's back on the agenda for a zoning change to go from residential to business. And we held sidewalks, the Select Board, the town administrative office has been out there, as has, has the Planning Board to meet with the residents there. And this is the, the last step to take for public input before we vote whether to send this to town meeting for, for the total population to vote on it. We're not voting design, what's going there, none of that, that's all going to be taken care of in the Planning Board in the future. This is just a warrant article to change the zoning from residential to business so that that piece of property can be used in the form, in the development of Form Based Coding in that area. The board have any questions or concerns? Anybody? Hannah?
So at the last meeting, when we heard this, which was September 2nd, I had brought up the whole notion of this house was likely going to get torn down and Tree East Parking Lot would go there. So we had a lengthy discussion about housing and the fact that, as a whole, the developer has not committed to any sort of housing. And at the time, I requested a memorandum of, of understanding from the bank, and so I'm just wondering whether we have received that MOU with respect to any residential units being created onsite or offsite.
I spoke with Mr. Vaughn, I believe is watching this tonight, I don't think he needs to speak, but I spoke with him today to talk about the disposition of 12 Robinson Road. At our sidewalk, when, when the Select Board and the Administrative Assistants and members of the Planning Board were there, the, the talk was about the potential to put multifamily into 12 Robinson Road, which the town of Littleton owns. And I don't want to speak for the bank, but what I was told was that if, in fact, the town does decide they want to go forward with the redevelopment of 12 Robinson Road, that the bank would be very interested in assisting in that and looking at the RFP if the town decided to bring out an RFP. Now, as far as housing above, obviously, that's going to be predicated by what's going to go down below. They are still looking at housing inside the senior resident, inside the Form Based Coding. Until they get the full site plan before us, until we know what the subject issues are going to be and what the below parking requirements are going to be, they can't commit to how many numbers, but they are committed to doing some for, some sort of housing component along with the redevelopment of the, the frontage on Great Road.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. I know from my perspective, whether it's Northern Bank or if they were to sell the property before anything gets built, any future developer would then have the benefit of having that parcel as part of the overall project. And so from that line of thinking, being able to have something in writing would be probably the most secure.
Are you talking about 12 Robinson Road?
I'm talking about either Robinson Road or something within the project site. So how can we go about making that happen for this particular bylaw proposal? Because my concern is, it's a whole chicken and egg. They're saying, if this passes, then they'll consider doing housing. And what I'm saying is, for Littleton to be able to have that security is important. So I believe that the bylaw actually has to have a statement in there, something to be effective, and the developer of the project, regardless of who the developer is, commits to creating X number of housing units near or within the development, so something to that effect.
But there's no bylaw that we're discussing. This is a rezoning.
This is a rezier.
Oh, no, 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 I understand that it's rezoning, but we still have the opportunity to be able to make a change on town meeting floor. So I wanted to make sure to bring it up, because again, there is no other way other than to buy into what they are saying.
First of all, they don't control 12 Robinson Road. They.
No, I understand that.
And when we were out there, he spoke directly about the fact that if the town decides that they want to redevelop 12 Robinson Road, that the bank would be very interested in, am I putting words in, very interested in supporting that. Okay, we can't get it as a memorandum of understanding because the bank doesn't own it, we own it.
Yeah, that's right. So the 12 Robinson Road, you care custody control of the board, so Select Board, and a lot of different uses are being looked at, that housing being one, cultural being another. The Select Board hasn't determined what route they want to go, maybe issue two RFPs for both and see what's most advantageous for the town, but they certainly have interest, but the board hasn't even brought that up yet for discussion.
Now, as far as our bylaw goes, if we want to tell the, tell the bank that we want to see housing up, up above, which we have told them, then when we get it to the site plan and special permit, that's where we're going to, you know, put, tell them that we have to. It's in our bylaw that they have to look at and they have to, they'd have to give us a good reason not to in order for us, obviously, they're not going to get your vote unless they support it, unless they put something in there, so I think they're smart enough people, they've been going at this long enough to understand that that's an important component to the redevelopment of the common. We've talked about the walkability, we're going to talk about that at great length in our next one, but we've talked about having, using the Form Based Coding, having retail down below and some sort of housing up above, and I think we're all committed to that, and I, I'm pretty sure the bank realizes that they're going to need our votes once we get past this and once they come before us for their special permits and their site plan review, that they're not going to get enough votes unless they do have some sort of. But I, we can't get a number out of them until we know what the subject's going to be and what their final design is, and they're still in the middle of trying to do it because they don't have a firm answer of what's, what's going on out there. So this is a, while that's important, the most important part is to get input, make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward and discuss it on town meeting floor. But housing is, is a component of this, and they have expressed a desire to be a partner in housing. I guess that's the best way I can put it.
Piggybacking on Anna's concern about some kind of written memorandum, by the same token, there have been representations made to the Robinson Road residents about buffer landscape, et cetera, et cetera, and we don't have any memorialization of that. It said to me, well, you know, the Planning Board's going to have to approve it, but I'm concerned as things go, if the property, I'll turn this off, if the property is going to be sold, you know, that those representations may go nowhere. So I sympathize with Anna. I don't know what we do about it, I don't, I'm not sure that it, you know, it impacts what we're doing tonight, but that is the concern. I mean, I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone in this room who came out to Robinson Road, talked with the residents several occasions, and if not convinced us, may, may just concede that it might be a good thing for the town. It's not necessarily a good thing for our road, but they're presenting something that's very appealing. And I'm speaking as someone who will be probably the most directly affected property, so, but I do want to, I do want to acknowledge that things have been said, but it's not reflected at all in.
But isn't that, it won't, isn't that what we will take into account once it comes before the planning?
Yeah, well, that's what's, that's what's said, but I want to refer to this meeting that's televised.
Okay.
Saying that there have been representations made, and if they don't happen, then it's on.
Then you have something on public record that.
It's on the Planning Board, it's on everyone who was out there who participated in those meetings.
We have, still have to go through the, through the special permit process. It's still been four to five votes. They made assertions when they were out there about a better buffer, about a stone wall, their plans reflect a nicer stone wall and things like that, they actually do, they changed a little bit. I, they, they've told us a lot of things when we're out there, and they all seem good and seem positive. I understand, me of all people, I've been 30 years dealing with developers, I totally get, you can't take them verbatim for everything that you want, you, there has to be a little bit of leap of faith. I think that the, the fact that the, the bank has waited this long, has come through this many renditions of what they've wanted and everything, and has listened, and the residents may not feel that they've listened to them, I think they have, they've gone out of their way to have site meetings out there and everything else. I believe that at the end of the day, by the time we're done going through the, the formal process, that we'll all be happy with what we got. I totally understand, and you make, you put it on record and make sure that they understand that if we're moving forward on this, that there is expectations of more buffering. If they don't need, and I'll, and I'll list them, what they told us about it, they don't need the detention point out there, to take the detention point out and put a park there so that there's more screening, more buffering, more green space, more green space on the other side of the tree line, they talked about that, and that was, that was discussed, and they didn't, they didn't have a problem with that. So I just want to make sure, and what else did they talk about that you want to actually say right now so you can get it on the camera?
Well, we specifically talked about a 30-foot green buffer from the property line back into their property.
And they said as long as.
They said, no problem, no problem.
No problem, as long as they don't need that detention point, they didn't have any problem, I believe that all agreed, absolutely. Okay? Anything else? Does the board have any, I'd like to open it up to the public if we, if we don't have any other questions.
No, I think we've talked and talked and talked about it.
Hannah, are you okay?
Well, I hear what you say, but I don't like it, and I think that it's actually putting the town in a position of having given up this residential property, and they're, and I, I understand the big, large picture of the development, but in terms of the one piece of housing, I don't think it's asking too much to make a, a written commitment that there's going to be something there.
How can we do it when they don't control it, Hannah? Tell me how we're supposed to do that? They don't own it, we don't.
Literally, a memorandum of understanding is something that they intend to do, right? And so they're not willing to put it into.
But they don't own it.
They don't own it, they're not the ones putting it in.
It doesn't have to be for Robinson Road, it can be for, you know, housing in and or around the, the project development.
They're going to put housing inside the project if they can get it to fit in. I mean, this is entirely.
There's a lot of ifs, Mark.
We're going to have so much housing in 550 King Street.
So I would agree, like, go ahead and open it up to the public.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any, first of all, before I raise your hand, I'll call on you, you can state your name for the, for the record tomorrow, and if somebody wants to speak on this one, so, does anybody want to? There's a guest, Mr. Sanders way in the back.
But Mark, you know I was going to speak on that one, so.
I knew that, I knew that.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Anna, because what I'm trying to understand here, we're asking for a rezoning. And I'm trying to understand, if you're going to ask for a rezoning, why can't you put the stipulation into rezoning? Because there's nothing prohibits you from saying what this should include if it goes forward. Because there's nothing prohibits you from saying what this should include if it goes forward, and the bank buys it, or whoever buys it. We're going to tell you that the stipulation, when we put in the rezoning, this has to take place. Now, we have authority to do that, because you're asking the town to vote on the rezoning. And it's not just what you present. It's what we as a town see as a protector in doing it, because you know what they say. If you ain't got any writing, it doesn't count. So, I see no reason, if you're going to write up the rezoning, why can't you just make a stipulation in there? There's nothing wrong with it. From a legal standpoint, you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We have town councilor. What are your thoughts on...
Well, the proposed rezoning, as I understand it, is to move it from one district to another district, and that's, you know, that would allow the property owner to avail themselves of the uses available in that new district that we're adding to. It's, it's not easy to otherwise limit the uses that can be made of the property if what we're doing is taking it from one existing zoning district and putting it into another existing zoning district. Has a range of available uses.
Well, the, the issue, I guess maybe I need to, we're taking a residence that's a house right now. The bank owns it. And we're going to knock it down, we're going to use it for a buffer and to extend the lots really now. It's 101 feet. We're going to make, try to square off the, the back of the lot all the way across. And that would involve taking 25 Robinson Road. Having said that, there's a house there. It's, the bank owns it, they've owned it for a number of years. The residents were concerned about green space. We, we addressed the issue of trying to give them as much green space. If we don't need the detention, if the developer doesn't need the detention point, he's more than willing to give him more, to give up more green space. The issue came up about the fact that the neighbors were losing a residential house there. The town of Littleton actually owns a piece of property right across the street that we bought a number of years ago, 12 Robinson Road. And the thought wasn't when we approached the bank out there about potentially helping out. And they said, you know, if the, if the town decides to go to an RFP on that, we would be interested in helping out. That's how we left it, like that. And Mr. Sanders and, and Ms. Houston want to tie that directly to it. And I don't see how we can do that, because they don't control it. We control it. The town owns it. You know, if you want to put a, do we, do we just simply add something to it at the end that if in fact 12 Robinson Road becomes available, that they would be interested in bidding any RFP for, for multiple families? As it is right now, multiple families allowed upstairs in the development we're talking about. The developer still needs four out of five votes in order to be approved. So, there was, we still have leverage to tell them we want housing up there. We don't have to, we don't have to approve it if there's no housing up there. We can say we want housing up there. So, I still think we have the protection as a town to ask for some housing that go along with this project. I don't think we need to tie 12 Robinson Road into it, but I just want to...
No, it sounds to me as though we've got two separate and independent properties, and the zoning is, you know, the zoning article addresses one of them, not the other.
Right. And I would say that I am not tying it to 12 Robinson Road. I am trying to be vague about the fact of where, whether it is adjacent to the project property or within the project property. That's all it needs to say. It's more a commitment that they will create housing somewhere.
Yeah, no, it's in our bylaw. It's in your form-based coating that you fought for a year and a half to put in.
No, because as, no, because as it has been corrected by others, that it is not a requirement to have housing, and it's incumbent upon us, right? And so, are each of you going to commit to it?
We want, we want housing above.
I know, if they do not bring housing forward. That's another way to do it. If I can get a commitment right now from each of you that you will decline the project, if it doesn't include housing, fine, then you've got my support.
Okay. Do you want to pull the board and see what their thoughts are on that? They need four out of five votes in order to, in order to get the master plan, the special permit for this. Anna wants to keep it rolling.
I don't, I don't know that...
We can do that?
I don't know if the board is going to commit it. Loud under the terms of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that anyways.
Trying to keep her, trying to keep everybody happy. Okay. We have it in there. You can decide not to vote in favor of it.
I understand.
Okay. All right, so, okay, so we're okay with that? Anybody else? Anyone else have any questions that could, Bailey?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Anthony Salty, Town Administrator. I think you referenced the point earlier that they haven't ruled out residential on the site, but it's very much predicated on the successful passing of the sewer article, just as much as 550 King Street is dependent on that too. So, he certainly has, has expressed his interest to do that. It just, right now, it's, the tools aren't there and the tool aren't to do that.
He said that to us on, on the sidewalks, and he wasn't against it. He just can't tell us definitively until he knows what the sewer's going to look like and how much of it, and, you know, because obviously, his parking and what he's going to put out there is going to be predicated on sewer. That's what this whole, as we, if you remember correctly, form-based coating, everything was predicated on the fact that town sewer is going to come in, because form-based coating is not going to work without town sewer, and you're not going to get housing up above if we don't have town sewer, because the pro, the properties are too small at some point, the sewer that is involved with it. So, we know that. Okay? So, he has, they have told us that. Anyway, anyone else have any questions that could, no, Mr. Sanders. No, go ahead.
I want, I want, I want to come in right quick. I don't want this board to lose the sight of affordable housing in the town of Littleton. Something that we don't have. And as we approve these developers to come in here, we need to make sure that we are fighting to get affordable housing on these projects, because it's very critical to the people here in the town of Littleton. And more especially, our senior.
I couldn't agree more. In fif, in five more minutes, where you can stand up again, and we can talk about the next one. How's that? I'll even let you go first.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? We're going to vote this at the end? Is that what we're going to do?
That's up to you.
We have a couple of minutes? Does, having heard no more?
I have a question. Does this mean that anyone who's online doesn't get an opportunity for...
No, Joe's, Joe's watching the...
Yep. Okay, so no one is, so we spent a lot of time. It's time to decide. It's time to vote whether we want to support this and send it on to town meeting floor, where we can discuss it at greater length. Mr. Sanders can get up and talk about it again at town meeting floor. We have to move it along, so he can do that. Anyone else?
Say we go down it.
I, okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. We have to do that first.
With respect to 25 Robinson Road.
25 Robinson Road, yes. And we may close the public case, 25 Robinson Road. That's what you say.
I'm not going to be involved in that.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing for 20, for 25 Robinson Road.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of closing the hearing, sign it by raising your hand, so we can see.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, I entertain a motion to approve the, the rezoning of 25 Robinson Road, to send that proposal to town meeting floor for, for discussion on...
And it would recommend you, the planning board vote on supporting it?
Supporting the article to be sent to town meeting floor for discussion there. On the date is...
October 26th.
October 26th?
25.
25, I can't tell. October 25th. Anyone make that motion?
I make the motion that we take this to the town meeting on October 25th to vote on the rezoning of Rob, 25 Robinson Road.
Second.
And, and the planning board supports?
Oh, and the planning board supports, yes.
All those in favor of this? Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
The, nope, okay.
Oh, was that the, that was the, oh...
To support the article.
To support the article.
Okay, I do not want to, I want to abstain. I don't not support it, but I...
You know, do we need just a simple majority?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a 7:15 public hearing, zoning public hearing, King Street Common Zoning District. You already read the, the, the public hearing?
Uh huh.
All right, so I'll start, give you a brief overview of that as best I can. It's a pretty, well, it's complex, but it's not that complex. We're talking about the old IBM site, 550 King Street. We have an opportunity to put mixed use, mixed use being form-based coating in the front for 250 feet. The front is all the way down, almost 1,000 feet of it. The title house will be left in its natural state, as is the quote-unquote parrot, although I don't think you can find a parrot there if you're life-dependent on it. Will stay as, as we see it now. And the redevelopment of the property will be the form-based coating in the front, a marketplace, mixed use kind of area of, as allowed by form-based coating. The two buildings, it's unsure the, what's going to happen to those buildings. They may be repurposed, they may not be repurposed, they may be knocked down. At this juncture, no one knows. I think we're all aware that the, the, the days of the big office buildings, if COVID didn't kill it, the economy killed it before that, but those days have, have left us. Littleton's been lucky for 40 years. We put our eggs in the digital, the IBM, the HP, the compact basket of 500,000 square feet of office space up there. That's not coming back. When the property was made available by Heinz Development, they asked input from the town. We had multiple meetings with potential developers, and everybody wanted to use it, just like its own, its own industrial A and industrial B, wanted to put big boxes up there for 50, 75 bay warehousing for, for the big bar, you know, the big companies, the big delivery companies. It's not what the town wanted. We had, have an opportunity to put a mixed use up there. Mixed use being residential in the back, market, marketplace in the front, retail in the front. So, what we're voting on tonight is not the, what it's going to look like. It's not the density, it's not the height, it's not anything else like that. It's the fact that we want to change the zoning there as well, from industrial A, industrial B, to business.
King Street Common Mixed Use District.
King Street Common Mixed Use Business District, which will allow for multi-use out there, multi-family. As Mr. Sanders pointed out eloquently a few minutes ago, this is an opportunity to get a diver, more diversity for the housing that's in Littleton now. We don't have workforce housing. We don't have seniors. The, the plans that we've seen show senior residential, age-in-place housing, potentially going out there, meaning independent living, assisted living, maybe some dementia or some sort of critical care for the, for the seniors in the town. It's also workforce housing. We have looked at 70 feet, the tests are out there to try to put a six-story building up there. So, the 70 feet is out there. The density, we can only tell you that until the final disposition of the other buildings and what's finally going to go out there, we're looking at a couple hundred units of workforce housing, maybe a couple hundred units of senior housing. I don't think what other high points are there. You know, this is all in keeping with what the master plan has talked about. This is keeping in what the revitalization of the common, it's obviously going to be tied directly into the sewer. It's going to be the largest user of sewer. It's a nice, it's going to be a great way to jumpstart the sewer. It's going to have tremendous impact as to the revenue into the town of Littleton right now, where we've had, we could probably speak to that as we go through, what the impact, if we don't do anything, will be to the tax, taxpayers in Littleton, and if we do, for mixed use out there, what, what that ramifications are. We also have spoken with the police, fire, and the, and the school departments. We have the, the impact of what those will be, which we'll share with you as we get along. Does the board, you know, he summed it up pretty good, so the people understand exactly what, like, again, like I said, we're not voting on the master plan, special permit, none of that. We still have traffic to do. We still have drainage. We still, we still have conservation. All of that will come after this is approved, if and when it gets approved at town meeting floor. It will come after it for a master plan, special permit at the planning board's office after that. So, this is just about the rezoning of, the potential to rezone from industrial A and industrial B to a, to a mixed, Littleton Common Mixed Use District. That's what we're talking about, and that's what we're, we're voting on this evening. Did I make it crystal clear, or clear enough? Okay. Board have any questions or concerns?
Well, I, I want to be clear for the people who might be watching, that we are not voting on a specific proposal. We are voting simply on a rezoning, and regardless of the proposal that may come before us, this property needs to be rezoned, because the present zoning does not allow for the mixed use that we'd like to see. Apart from that, you know, in terms of the specifics of the rezoning and the bylaw, you know, I think probably, you know, and we've tried to deal with this by the site visit of the manlet showing the height. I think it's going to be the height, and I think that that's one thing, because it's unprecedented in Littleton. And that's one thing that we'll have to, you know, that the citizens might weigh in on.
Well, the height is, it's unprecedented, but it's not unprecedented. If you were met, now, I'm going to, I've been on a little longer than you, so I'm going to go through some of my ancient history.
Okay.
When we approved the, Heinz Development was going to build an office building 20 years ago, at what is now the point.
Right.
It got approved, went to town meeting, I mean, went through the planning board, it was an office building. They requested a waiver. They went through the ZBA. We got a waiver for six, six-story buildings. We were going to have four six-story buildings there. So, while they were never built, because eventually Heinz sold to Cisco, Cisco decided not to build it, and we left with nothing out there, but we did approve the height. And the issue back then was fire suppression. We got monies from the developers for fire department and things like that. We don't need that anymore, because now the code's out, the whole building has to be spray-coated. It's not going to be an issue from the fire department, but we did look at that a number of years ago. And back then, nobody really had a concern about the height. They were more concerned about getting the job, getting the building approved and getting something out there finally.
So, I think the thing that needs to be brought forward, because like the point site, this is an appropriate site for that kind of thing. It's on the interstate. It's on an exit. It's, one thing we did look at was the visibility from the common, which was minimal anyway. So, I'm just...
No, I know.
I'm not bringing my, my personal point of view. I'm bringing forward points that town residents have made to me.
It's definitely, but, and I totally agree, it's definitely a hot point on this one.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I was certainly concerned about that until we walked the property. And it was interesting to me, just with all the mature landscaping and just what Jeff said, that you really don't, you wouldn't see it as much as I thought you would.
The other issue is, because of the debris and the other buildings that are up there, it's almost the same height as what's out there now.
Exactly.
Because it does drop down 12 feet. It is set way further in the back. And the pictures, I don't know if mine wants to show the pictures up there. The pictures from inside the building, looking across at the 70 feet, you're, you're looking straight across at it, so it's the same height.
Right.
So, that, given the fact that, you know, we're going to try to keep, or we're going, they're going to try to keep as much of the, the buffering that's already there there, you're going to see it, you'll see it through the buffer, you'll see it through the buildings that are going to be in front of it, but I don't think it's a...
Well, it's also the only way we're going to get workforce housing that's affordable.
That's affordable.
Is, is to stack them.
Make it more cost-effective, so that we can get more affordability out. I agree. Anyone else? Anna want to, the, Margaret?
Well, I think I agree with what's been... Well, I think, um, I, I agree with what's been said. I, I think that we're relying on verbal representations about keeping the trees and keeping the title house. I don't know, um, how secure those, those representations really are. I, I mean, I think if those, if all the tall trees remain, then the building will be fairly well-hidden. I, I drove all the roads approaching that site, and I was quite surprised at how hard it was to find the grain. But again, you know, if, if the property changes hands after we rezone it, um, how, how secure are those representations, and particularly the, the title house?
I think it goes back to our previous discussion for twenty-five Robinson, is that the, any proposal to be successful before this board, after we've had these discussions about the title house green space, et cetera, um, you know, that would be, that would be, necessary for them, someone to bring forward a proposal.
Not only that, but the developer didn't have to buy the title house. Title house, uh, maybe it was before you were on it, we broke the title house off a long time ago, so the developer could, first of all, the Heinz could sell everything else, and that title house is going to stand on its own. So Paulie bought the title house and has told us at many a meeting that his intention is to keep it exactly the way it is, so that it's part of the common, it's part of the green space for the common. I think we have to kind of take him at his word, and also, he still has to get our votes, so we still have, you know, we could still say, no, we wanted more good, you promised us more green space, and we still have that, that, once he comes before us with a master plan special permit, we still do have that area. Any quick, can I open it up, or are you?
Well, I have a couple of comments and, and questions, because it sounds like, um, what happened the last time that we met on this, is that we wanted to make sure that we were able to get it onto the warrant, great, fabulous, and that there would still be an opportunity to perhaps provide some comments and maybe even tweak it if needed, and I understand that would have to be done on town floor, right? Okay. So, um, with respect to the purpose of this, I, I would like to highlight some words, because this is what it means to me, and so if it means something different to you all, please let me know. Under one seventy-three dash two-two-six purpose, the fifth bullet says, what does compatible with current, uh, excuse me, the fifth bullet says, um, appropriate infill development compatible with current market demand. And so if I take a look at that, I see the current market demands are, Littleton is in need of more middle-market, middle-income housing. And so from that perspective, I think it's really important to be able to identify that somewhere within here, because if at some point, let's give it ten years from now, the quote, "market" increases toward the higher-income side, is that something that we're all going to be happy with here in Littleton? The presentation that I've been giving on housing to this group back in July and to other groups really highlights the need for middle-income housing, and so to be able to do something like that and keep it consistent, we want to be able to actually identify that that is what we would want at that property. So how, how do, how are we as a board going to, to be able to do that? Because let's say, for example, again, worst-case scenario, something happened, and this, um, this developer changes, or five years down the road, something changes again, how are we going to ensure that the Littleton that folks say they want, and this is from so many different residents that have said, we want Littleton to still stay small, we want Littleton to reflect the history that we've had, so how do we do that, especially with respect to housing? And so I would actually recommend, and I'm willing to do it on town floor, is to bring forward language that speaks to that. And in this particular area, the second to the bottom bullet says, housing choices in Littleton, adding some language there. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
We've talked to the developer at great length about workforce housing, affordable housing, senior housing, and that's what he's committed to, okay? I don't know if we can actually put a percentage or something, I mean, obviously, he's going to have to do an affordable component, that's going to be ten percent, that the state mandates that. He's going to ask for density, when he comes in and asks for the density, that's when we talk to him and say, okay, you want X amount of density, we want more affordability. That's when you have your negotiation with them.
Well, but, but I'm saying even regardless of who the applicant is, regardless of who the developer is, part of what we do in setting these districts is we establish the vision, and we establish the expectations. And so if the expectation is that we want Littleton to have middle-income housing, especially because we're talking a lot of it, then we need to put something in there that safeguards that, so that in ten years, you know, nothing can happen to the housing there that would cause it to suddenly become high-income housing. That's what I'm saying. We trying to set the vision and the perspective, not just for today, not just with this developer, but moving forward as well. So how do we do that?
I think you're trying to set the economy, to be perfectly honest. It's going to be, he, obviously, he has to pay the bag back, so he's going to have to put housing in on a couple of different levels. We're going to have the ability, once he comes before us, because maybe you don't understand, when he comes before us and asks us for, let's just pick a three hundred apartments you want, okay, we have that, that's the time we sit down and say, okay, that's great, but we want affordable housing, and then we want thirty percent affordable housing, we want forty percent, that's when we sit down and negotiate with the developer over it. Putting it in the bylaw, I don't think is where, where we want to have it. We want to have it when we sit down and actually have a project in front of us. We don't have a project, we have a concept, we have an idea, that we want to rezone it because we want, we've all told him and we've all talked about it, workforce housing, senior housing. You know, everybody.
And we don't want Amazon.
And we don't want Amazon, and we.
Right, don't go down that path, because that's not what I'm saying. I am in favor of this development, but I want to make sure that we are able to actually identify what it is that we want, not just for today, but for the future as well, because this district is going to be here regardless of who the developer is. It's the same thing that we were trying to do down at the train station with the twenty-five percent affordable, right?
Mm-hmm.
We were putting that in the district bylaws, so why wouldn't we want to do something like that here?
Well, that was because it was a state requirement for forty.
Okay, well, it was a good state requirement, right?
Well, we have no state requirement on this. What if we want, I, I'm not sure, the only way to put this in amber, these values, is to do, you know, affordable rental housing, that's the only way it can be done. You can't, I, I can't imagine deed restrict, well, I don't know, I, I, I mean, and I sort of agree that, you know, it's a matter of, um, well, I don't know, I mean.
So this is what I'm envisioning, okay? If we say, as other folks in this room have said about the need for workforce housing, fine, so shouldn't we be at least put, be putting something in there that says, we want workforce housing in this particular district area, regardless of who the developer is?
But that's what we're doing when he comes before us, Anna, not for a bylaw. You're confusing putting it into the bylaw, it has nothing to do with the bylaw.
So I don't want us as a town to regret not having done that. So that's where I'm coming from.
So.
And, and so we're going to, if we're going to disagree, that's fine, I wanted to get your input on it, and I now have it. But what I'm saying is that I, I firmly believe that that would actually be safeguarding our workforce housing by putting something in the bylaw for the district, regardless of who the developer is. So, thank you. If there are no other comments, I'm going to move on to my second question. In one seventy-three dash two-two-nine under uses, it has extensive recreation, and I think that's defined as golf courses. So, did I misunderstand that?
Extensive recreation is a special permit process to the board of selectmen, if I'm not mistaken. The example we have in Littleton is the tubing park.
So I'm just wondering why, help me understand why you would have that.
Why would you exclude it if they're looking for a particular supports or whatever that would? I guess I wouldn't, I don't know why you would exclude it.
Well, it seemed very intentionally put in there, so that's why I was wondering what was, what was the rationale for it, that's all.
The bylaw was written, um, and, um, the town council, and I spent quite a bit of time on it, um, trying to include as much as we thought we could recommend, and so that was one that was included.
Okay. In that same area, it says other customary accessory uses, can you provide an example of what that means?
Accessory uses for, um, residential, they include parking and, let's see.
Tennis courts, maybe a pool.
How about a dog wash? Okay, dog wash.
That was a good example.
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Yep, and that, that keeps you from having to list everyone you can think of, and maybe not including some that we don't know of now that might be customary in the future.
Okay, thank you. Couple more, so, um, under the Form-Based Code dimensions requirements, so I've heard from a lot of residents that say they want to keep the residential components in two-and-a-half stories, and so I know that in Form-Based Code, the very front side, front buildings have the ability to have residential in two-and-a-half stories, the back buildings are approved to be able to have just a residential-only building, so I'm just trying to figure out why we would want to waive that residential component?
I think when we were out there and we talked about it, and, um, they, they talked about it directly to us, they want to have the ability to have a one-story building, to have a two-and-a-half story building, and this project's going to be a thousand feet long. Maybe it makes sense to have a three-and-a-half story building somewhere else, just to break up the fact that it's going to be on different levels. Maybe you have some, a building with an atrium in the middle of it, and you need the bigger, I don't know why you're, again, we're going to kick, we're going to catch it when he comes before us, and he's going to have to have a reason why he wants these, the higher height, but to take it out means he can't get it, or has to go to the ZBA board. But you've got, remember, Anna, that's a thousand feet long frontage down there, and if you had everything all at the same level, it's going to look, not look, like a village. It's got to have different heights, and like they said, some of them are going to be one-story, some of them are going to be two-and-a-half. Maybe we need a building here or there that's three-and-a-half stories, only because we want to put something different inside of it that's going to be, and they talked about an atrium, like you have at, um, Faneuil Hall, an atrium upstairs and walk up. I'm not saying that's what they're going to do, but that was what, when we talked about it, why they wanted the, the higher heights up there.
So dovetailing with your previous comment, uh, you know, I, you were talking about the Form-Based Code area, but the maximum building height in the rear, in the parking lot area, you know, which is quite high. The, the thing that's being held out to us is that if we can build this type of building, we can get to this affordable product. That's the only reason I would support it. You know, there would be more, you know, it, it's just costs less to produce a unit if it's aggregated into a bigger building. Otherwise, you know, if it's just to maximize profit, I don't think we need to go along, but if it's to maximize the possibility of deeper affordability, it would be worth at least having proposals before us to see what that means.
But again, isn't that something we discuss when they bring the master plan?
No, no, I, I, I agree, I'm just explaining to Anna that, that I share her concerns, and, and that's the only reason, but I, I, you know, I listened to her about the housing, she's our champion of that, and, um, this may be the way to get that.
I totally agree with you, Anna, about the housing. We need hundreds of hundreds of units. I just, one last, we, and let's talk about senior housing for a second, this is a golden opportunity for us to get something. When the seniors started coming before us, they asked us, we want age-in-place, we want to stay in Littleton, we want to stay where all our friends are, we want age-in-place housing. This is the best opportunity we have, and when they came before us, I wasn't a senior when they started coming before us, I am now a senior. It's taken that long to get some sort of senior housing. Now, you did have gray hair, I will admit that, but I wasn't a senior, I am now a senior. It's taken fifteen years for us to have the ability to give the seniors finally something they want.
Yes.
Age-in-place. It is important, housing, you're the champion of housing, I totally agree with you. The more we can get affordable, the more housing we get, this is, this checks off, as we've been saying all along, this checks off all the boxes.
But it also, it also checks off the box of the sewer, which gets us a revitalized common. I mean, this project does so much.
I'm not completely with any of that, sorry, I just wanted to get through some of these technical aspects, okay? So, um, HC in this area says, um, the requirements of one seventy-three dash two-two-one J in the Form-Based Code may be waived by the planning board at its discretion. And so I was trying to think about that, because one seventy-three, that citation is for, um, use and features, so I was hoping to get some input as to why that's, why, why we decided to put that there.
So one seventy-three, two-two-one dot J dot A refers to the Form-Based Code? Because there's no such section here, okay?
Yes, it does. And that refers to uses and features, occupation of floor space by different permitted uses is limited or restricted for buildings intended upon a position at lock, as well as each primary massing must have at least one principal entrance, and multiply, multi-story buildings with ground force commercial spaces must have one principal entrance for each commercial space, and the maximum number of going units permitted for any building is determined by the actual motor vehicle parking spaces provided. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, thank, thank you for, for, yeah, filling that in for me. It was for this site, um, that waiver is, um, recommended, so that there's more leeway in how the site is laid out. If, um, this Form-Based Code requires the, um, main access to be up on the street, where this site is a lot deeper than any of the other, um, sites in Form-Based Code District, then you would want another main access somewhere else as well. So it allows the board more leeway in approving a site that's, that, that's this size.
Okay. All right, that's helpful, thank you very much, Maran. And then, um, this is more of a reminder for, for all of us and for our potential developer on this site. I looked at schemat, at schematics, and really liked them, just wanted to make a reminder to all of us that curb cuts need to be at least three hundred feet, um, apart, is that right, Maran, three hundred feet apart?
Uh-uh, it's the top of my head, I think so.
Yeah, okay, so, that was it. And, so those are my comments based off the bylaw that we're looking at.
The floor, okay, bylaw, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I, there's a couple of sentences that I don't really understand the implications of it. In dimensional requirements, design standards, under D, um, sentence A, for master plan development projects, lot coverage shall be calculated using the total area of the master plan, and then the one after that, density also shall be calculated using the total area of the master plan. So I'm just wondering, is that the whole forty-one acres? So for density, we take the forty-one acres and multiply by twenty and get eight hundred and twenty units?
Yeah, I would suggest that we use the thirty-eight acres that are in Littleton, not the two and two and a half.
Thirty-eight, but then.
Yes, that's, generally, that's the idea, correct.
Okay. So that's, that's the maximum?
The maximum, if it was only the residential use across the entire site, that's the only way you could fit that many units there?
Obviously, it's not.
So on the ground, not.
It's not, it's not going to happen, but I just, I mean, that's some, that's something that I think is going to come up. And then the other question was, um, lot coverage, does that give people, the, or the developer, the ability to have some lots completely covered and have open space elsewhere in the, in the forty acres?
As long as in aggregate, um, it's no. As long as in aggregate, it's no less, I'm going to say it wrong, it's, as long as enough fall, it doesn't impact groundwater quality in our aquifer.
Okay, so there's a lot of flexibility in terms of impermeable surfaces?
Correct. And the example we can think of is at the point where there are lot lines that go basically between buildings and you have impervious cover, you know, that's high on one lot and lower on another one because of where the open space lays. And I'm not saying this very well, but it has a lot to do with financing. If a business owner wants to own a particular building, they would have a lot created that was, could well be 100% impervious. But that doesn't mean that that, or you still count that over, over the whole site?
Okay, so you get adequate advantage.
Maren's entirely correct. Where, when you're dealing with these large developments, sometimes the funding, either through financing or it's the corporate entity, requires a real interest in property, and then they may create a parcel that they actually own.
It equals the footprint.
Correct.
All right. I mean, that's who the project is, the property is right now. The way you look at the standard property, they look at the whole area. We're going to take into the title house office and the orchard, there's probably open space. So, that's going to be calculated into it.
All right. I just want to bring up, though, that we could go back, and I think, I think it was Anna's comment, that we could have designated the title house and green space as being excluded from this overall, you know, because while that doesn't reach 20% of the rest of the site, it does contribute a lot to its, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just.
We want it, Anna, we want to keep it.
No, no, no. Of course we want to keep it. But right now, that is included as open space. But we could say, we want that open space, open space, and then we want to exclude it from the rest of the parcel.
For the calculations.
For the calculations.
He owned it, you can't do it that way.
No, I'm just talking about for the purposes of the 80%. So, what's going to hap, what could hap, could happen is that because of this, the rest of this entire site is 90%. And we could say, no, we want the rest of this entire site 80%.
But that's not the way it is now. That's calculated in the calculations as it sits right now, as it sits for IBM.
Okay, well, that's a good argument.
It's that way now, we should keep it that way.
I'm just saying that this is, you know, these things could come up.
We can't create new laws, you know?
Well, this.
I would agree with you. If they didn't step up to the plate and spend a couple million dollars to buy the title house, they should have.
And I do want to, I do want to just make a comment that the part, we, we allowed an A and R for basically an acre, and the title house and green space is a couple acres. So, the actual part that we refer to the pear orchard is not included in the A and R that we approved.
But it was broken off separately.
Correct. Just half of it was broken off separately, yeah.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else do, before we open it up to the public?
Can we give the public?
Yeah, we have about 15 minutes. It's at least 15 minutes. Anybody in the office, Mr. Sanders, let it gas. You're my best client, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to speak to the citizens of town of Belton here with regards to this rezoning. It's a golden opportunity, economic wise, because we need more commercial business in this town to help offset the taxes that we resident are paying. I recall, we was at somewhere around 73 verse 27 to Commercial and Development, I could be wrong with it now. I called the assessing to get that, but she wasn't able to get back to me about that. This, this rezoning is so critical for the town. And I'll tell you why. You had an owner before that didn't want to cooperate with this board here. Now you have someone that has purchased this property, and over a period roughly, maybe three years from now, they're willing to invest probably about $380 million in that site up there. That's a lot of money. So, the town can get good taxes on that piece of property up there. Another thing is, every city and town is doing development. Here in Littleton, we have a board, and we have individuals in this town that are smart. And they look out for the citizen's best benefit when it comes to development and not just letting developers come in here and walk over you. That is something that's pressure that you find that you have that type of quality and caliber of people on boards that make decisions that's going to be beneficial to you in the long run. I admire each and every one of these individuals here because there's going to be the developer coming and asking for certain things. And I know that they are tough in some aspects of it, especially when it comes to the housing. I was hoping they was going to find out how many residential buildings that they project that go down in that parking area and the height on it. Well, if you look, you wouldn't have an environmental impact with resident because the buildings that cross the street there on King Road, I mean, on the Great Road, where they project that you're going to have the building for the residential, and off on King Street, you got very little, maybe one or two houses there. And I don't think it will be an impact environmental there. We put the hotel in the point. So, if you look at the number of stories that building is, and where it sits at, compared to coming over to 550 King Street, and they put those buildings in there, you will be almost about even keel in terms of the buildings and then the environmental concern of the area that you're in. I don't think you have a fight environmental as far as that goes. But the most important thing that this board has to do is to fight, to let this developer know, we want as many affordable housing in here for the town of Littleton, and we are not going to take less by him shifting and not wanting to give us what we want. Now, I do believe that there comes a time when people don't want to do it, they want to change. I think you ought to feel it. So, I think we, the people in this town, have that advantage. But the most important thing, we have to do the rezoning if we're going to look at putting this sewer system in. That 550 property is a key factor into the sewer system that is projected to go in this town of Littleton. And we should, as individuals, think our conscience, go to the town meeting, listen to what the pros and cons of it. And I think the long or the short of it is, we should rezone 550 so that we can move forward with that project and also move forward with the sewer system in the town of Littleton. This is probably going to be the last big major project you're going to see for some time in the town of Littleton. And I would hope that the people would do the right thing and help the seniors to get some housing. Because we have seniors in here who would like to downsize, sell their home, and get in something smaller. I know several seniors have sold out of here and moved to another community. We got people that want to stay in Littleton. Why? Because the people are tolerant. We have a good community here. Make no mistake about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Okay. Who can follow that? No. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
What he said.
Yeah. Actually, I did want to speak, Mr. Chair, before you open it up to the public.
You are the public.
True. Okay. So, my name's Cindy Napoli. I'm on the Littleton Select Board. I am on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I am on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I want to echo the words of Mr. Sanders. That's a hard act to follow for us. I just want to just talk about this project in general and reinforce to people how important it really is to our community. Back in 2015, we had a housing production plan put together, which basically predicted that we would have a growth in population ages 20 to 35 and 60-plus. The housing production plan provided that we create multi-unit and rental housing to accommodate for that population growth. That was in 2015. The last multi-unit housing project we had in Littleton was in 2014. And we've suffered for it as a community. Despite best efforts to create affordable housing and to provide for the residents of our town, we, we've fallen short. It's been many years since we've had somebody come forward like LePoli Companies with a proven track record in their offering to us the ability to create what we need in our town where we said that we wanted it. This site was designated as a priority development area by the town in 2012. And most residents don't realize that. So, regardless of getting hung up on building heights and other things that come along with this proposed rezoning, I don't want people to lose sight of what this development will do for our town and for the people. And so, before you get hung up on four-story, six-story, five-story buildings, I want you to think about the number of people who work in Littleton that can't afford to live here. I want you to think about the number of senior citizens, as Mr. Sanders mentioned, who have built their lives here in Littleton and want to downsize but can't. And so, now they're moving to other communities. They're moving away from the town that they know and love, where they raised their families and where they raised their children because they can't be here anymore because we don't have the housing for them. And shame on us for that, to be honest with you. But we're trying to do something right here. We're very, very fortunate to have this opportunity for our town. And this, this project really represents a huge opportunity for our town. This is probably one of the biggest things that we've had happen in our town in I don't know how many years. Like, I honestly, the economic opportunity this will bring for jobs, for the, the ability for people who can't afford to live in Littleton to be able to live here. Rental housing in Littleton is cheaper than homeownership. It's going to provide for so many people that need housing, whether it's affordable, whether it's market rate. Bartlett, Mr. Harvey's on the Affordable Housing Trust with me. He came up, the Affordable Housing Trust gave, came up with a list of concept goals for the type of housing we want to see in Littleton and in what price points. We gave that to LePoli Companies as a reference point for them to work with. So, we are having that dialogue with them. But I just want people to realize that we can get up, hung up on the affordability component to it, and there is definitely a need of that in not only Littleton but across the state. But there's also a lot of people who can't afford, who don't qualify for affordable housing, that require housing as well. And this project brings all of that. It encompasses all of that. So, I just wanted to just speak on behalf of myself and just reiterate the boards that I do work with. And I want to thank the planning board for your work on this and bringing this forward so quickly. I know this kind of snuck up upon us, and I appreciate you working hard to get it done and get it before the voters in October. But this project really is important on so many levels, and I just, I just really want to reinforce that to people. I've been seeing on social media some opposition to it and apprehension, and I can appreciate that. But this is just more, on so many levels, it's about the people. It's about the people that live in our community, that work in our community, and that have built their lives in our community that we really need to think about when we consider this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Mr. President, I stand up here as a representative of the owners of 410 Grape Row, which is on the kitty corner around the corner from this project. And we just wanted to reiterate our support for the project and think it's a great district to Littleton and to the whole country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or do you want to, is there anybody on Zoom that?
Yes, there are.
Has their hand up?
Yes, there are. Sorry, let me, okay. We have three people that have their hands raised. Just a question is for the, through the chair, as far as whether you wanted to, or it's typical practice to establish limits as far as time, like two minutes, since we do have a number of people and most likely we could have a number of comments.
Okay.
Okay. First is Mike Zeldin.
Mr. Zeldin, are you there?
Not to worry, I'm here. My name is Michael Zeldin, Lowen Street. And just for the record, I was one of, along with Anna and Harvey. We, we all worked on the master plan itself back in 2015, and it got to be 2017 when it came out. And I was on the master plan, chaired the master plan implementation committee, which gave birth to the document which various previous speakers have referred to. I'd like to come back, however, to a theme here because most of the things that have been said are, shall we say, have been said many, many times. It is an opportunity. It's been obvious for years. IBM basically employed no one from Littleton, just to put it into, not no one, I think the top count was six. So, anything that we do in there with mixed use that provides jobs as well as housing for folks who, at an affordable level, is indeed has been pointed out numerous times, is a good idea, obviously. However, I would like to point out that there's been a tendency tonight to separate, to basically silo items that are actually closely related to each other. I'd like to point out to you that infrastructure, mainly roads, lighting, fast internet, sewage systems, all that kind of wonderful stuff that makes the engine go, are parts that Littleton still has a lot of catching up to do. And without it, even if you put it in, it's what goes on above ground that matters. And that's why this project is of special significance. It was recognized for many years this was it. I want to take the theme, and the theme is that the governor and his cohorts will show up for a groundbreaking years ago for the IBM site. I can assure you that if approached appropriately, the state, as well as the federal government, would be very happy to supply necessary support in a way of funding for a, shall we say, a redevelopment or a realized vision development of our common included infrastructure, as well as the items that go above ground. So, I'd like to ask not just the planning board, but also the select board and other boards, including, shall we say, a better stock development, economic development team, to get together and actually do some serious work on engaging this as the opportunity that they recognize it to be, but engage it on the scale it needs, that they need to get together and put all these components together so that the financing can be made realistic, not only for the developer, but give this town and the state, which wants housing desperately, more leverage to achieve the objectives that Anna and others on the planning board have articulated. So, I'm glad we're coming this way, and I hope that sometime in the next three or four years, the vision that this town provided for the master plan gets realized by a ceremony in which a governor plus all the folks who participated tonight get a chance to show up and do some groundbreaking on a real, shall we say, revitalized, reimagined Littleton common. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zeldin. Thank you, Mr. Zeldin.
Okay. Next, we have Jillian.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. So everyone gets what, about three minutes? Oh, about three minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, two minutes.
Two minutes? You're going to try to stop Mr. Zeldin?
Yes, I was. And he knows that.
Okay. So at least with Jillian, it's giving a message that using older versions, so need to promote to panelists to allow her to speak.
Hi, thanks for giving me a moment to speak. I want to share that I am in favor of the rezoning. I want to echo some of Anna's statements earlier that it is our duty and our responsibility to define what percentage of affordable housing we think is necessary for the vision of this rezoning. Not specific to the individual developer that we're talking to today, but for the future use of the property. I also want to share that I am deeply disappointed that Station Village did not move forward with its 40R rezoning. And I would like the committee to consider whether or not this can also be a 40R rezoning so that we can have access to additional state funding. And that is all I have to say. I'd like to also echo Mr. Zeldin's comments on infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forty R, do you want to speak about why we didn't go with the 40R?
Well, and also that Littleton Station is not dead in the water. It's just postponed.
Yeah, just postponed. Hopefully, it'll spring.
Next, we have Kimberly Mayo.
Ms. Mayo, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hey, everybody. Kimberly Mayo, 148 Harwood. First, my understanding is affordable units are not in any way reserved for Littleton or area residents per Fair Housing Law. And Littleton is a 13% exceeding state minimums, when over 80% of towns in Massachusetts are not. This plan, this rezone plan, upzone plan is way off the mark to me. Whatever goes in there needs to fit Littleton and support the community and our first responders, not cannibalize existing businesses or add to the town's congestion. Sal has probably heard that before, but I feel like he and his team are walking into a raging hornet's nest here. This isn't a city like Lowell or Lawrence where, coincidentally, I have family roots. Let me recap a brief history. In the past decade alone, we've lost Cooper Farm, Durkey Christmas Tree Farm, Jones Meadow, and Bennett Orchard, all destroyed forever to new developments. Due to this, in part, our taxes are soaring. This is a town of nature lovers, not overdevelopment, yet Littleton remains at just half the state average of protected open space. Open space pays for itself in a short period by reducing costs associated with increased residential and commercial development. We've just endured alleged violations of the Clean Waters Act at the point. And recent revelation that appears Cooper Farm developer has also betrayed our trust with lack of units for our seniors. Planning Board told us of 11-hour changes with the developer they shouldn't even be talking to. Then Station Village was thankfully pushed from the warrant just days before the June 2021 town meeting. The highly questionable Cooper Farm deal of five years ago is fresh in everyone's mind. Town business should always be done with full and complete transparency, and the public has a right to know what happened at Cooper. We also have no historic districts, unlike our neighboring towns, but we can change this too. Mr. LePoli, some of our officials do favor developer interests, but they don't represent us. And I'm sorry if you were misled about the people of Littleton. To enrich us, why not explore a community center for arts, community and culture over satellite campus surrounded by just grain space? Why not repurpose the IBM building as you've done successfully with Old Mill Buildings and Hall? Why not hear straight talk at tonight's PR session? There's little appetite for more retail or high-density residential in this town. Given his business acumen, we hope his team can put together something along these lines and in keeping with current zoning. If not respectfully, Littleton and LePoli Company are just not a good fit for each other. Thank you especially to Harvey, Anna, and Jada, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Is there anyone else, Joe, or we?
Yes, we have... Sorry, I'm just trying to lower hands. We have four more people that are, have their hands raised to speak. Next is Michael.
Michael, are you there? Can you give us your name and your address?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so Michael Brewer, 64 Beaver Brook. Yeah, so I just wanted to say I also support this development, or rezoning, especially how it's going to, you know, sync up with the master plan. And even the housing that isn't specifically marked as affordable, just having more supply is just so important. So I guess the only, everyone else put like much better reasons for why this is great. The only thing I was just wondering about was, as far as infrastructure, like what are we doing as far as non-car transportation? If there's going to be more people living in the middle of town, just in terms of like what are we doing to protect biking and make walking easier, and public transportation too, because I know there used to be a shuttle to the train station. That's not running, so there really isn't much. But yeah, that's all. Thanks.
So thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'll try to go backwards and you'll remind me what I skipped over. So as far as a shuttle from the 550 King Street site to the commuter rail station, the developer, in my first conversation with him, mentioned that that was one of the things that he envisioned new to the site when I shared that there was Crosstown Connect and a stage set already for resuming the prior shuttle. He was very glad to hear that and would be happy to work with Crosstown Connect or similar to reestablish a shuttle once there are residents in the new neighborhood to use that service. Was it bicycle lanes and pedestrian? MassDOT, who controls both 119, 2A, and 110, King Street, and Great Road that abut this site, they are fully onboard with complete streets, so they do account for not only pedestrian traffic but separate bike lanes as well. So I think they'll all be well-served, working closely with the developer and MassDOT on finding a way to address those issues as well. What was this first one?
What about the, remember when we were drowning rats out there? We talked about trail system throughout the perimeter of the entire property?
Exactly, that's right. There was a, they did this offer to include a pedestrian walkway around the perimeter of the site.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nick Lawler.
Mr. Lawler, are you there?
I mean, sometimes when you select someone, okay, he's on his way.
Mr. Lawler, are you there? Nick?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, thanks for having me on and giving me the opportunity. Obviously, I think Mr. Sanders said it best. This has a direct tie to the sewer project. For those that don't know me, I'm the general manager of Littleton Electric, Light, and Water Departments. The water department is in charge of the sewer project. And I really appreciate George's comments and others such as Mr. Zeldin that tie the two together. I could talk for two hours. I don't want the chairman to yell at me. So I just want to point you out to a couple opportunities. We'll be talking about the sewer project. I'll be working with LCTV on a watch-and-drop episode that you'll be able to watch after the 14th. There'll be a public forum on the 21st as well for the public to ask us questions about the sewer project and how we're moving forward with it. As it relates to the planning, LePoli Companies has partnered with us on the sewer project. They wrote a letter after the last time we met with the Planning Board expressing interest in that partnership. And the Board of Water Commission, through their special legislation the past couple of years ago, did expand the district onto that cross-saw land. So now LePoli Companies in that 550 King Street are inside the sewer district, and we'll pay their share of sewer project as we try to determine what that would be. So it's a great partnership. It makes that sewer project highly affordable for the town, and we're looking forward to working with various boards and LePoli Companies moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, two more. We have, we have Mike.
Mike, are you there? Can you give us your name and address?
I'm here. Yeah, Mike Brewer, 83 Mill Road. I just had a question about, I've heard a couple of times, the town doesn't want another Amazon facility there. So I'm curious, who, what, who is that? Who is the town? And I, you know, I guess you can answer that when I'm done. I'm just, I'm curious how that decision was made. Seems to me that that would be a pretty good location for that. It would, you know, bring the property value back up. We'd be getting taxes without necessarily having so much housing. Now, having said that, I'm not opposed to this project. I fully understand we need more affordable housing, and I think, you know, I've looked at pictures of it and, you know, obviously conceptual, but it looks great. You know, if it goes through, I won't be, you know, I won't be one of the people fighting it. I think it'll be, it'll be great for our town. I think, you know, we're revitalizing the common as it is, and we're on the track to do that. Traffic is going to increase in that area regardless. Hopefully, we can have, you know, mitigation, you know, for that as we, you know, build up the common as the, you know, the master plan documents. But I guess my concern is that with this project, and then if we're also doing the 40R project by the train station, I mean, how much, how much housing are we looking to add to this town? I mean, we're talking about hundreds here, hundreds over at the train station. I know that's, you know, on the back burner now, but I just heard say that it's not dead. So I guess my concern is, how much housing are we going to get? And, you know, like I said, I'm all for this project. I was all for the 40R project. But I don't think, I don't know how we can sustain both of those. So I guess that's a concern of mine. But, you know, overall, I think this, this project looks good. I think it'll, you know, help revitalize or start to revitalize the common. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Since I'm the one who said, brought up the big box, we had four different developers come before us when Heinz put it out to bid. They all came and wanted to put big boxes in. They all wanted to put, because it's owned industrial, that's what they came to do. As the town, as the Select Board, the town administrators, and the Planning Board got together and started to see loading dock after loading dock, 65, 75 loading docks, and the traffic that that would generate, I don't think anybody in here wanted to see tractor trailers running up and down through the common to service this facility that would be there. I think that's why we decided we wanted more of a mixed use out there. And luckily, a developer came before us offering that. Otherwise, we'd be stuck with big boxes down there and the traffic that goes along with them. And there's a good potential that the trailers wouldn't be allowed to come up. 119, they'd have to service this whole property off of King Street, which would make the situation even worse. So having a big box up there is going to decimate the common. We want to revitalize the common, not fill it with tractor-trailer trucks coming and going all day long. So that's why the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the town administrators thought that was not a good mix to revitalize the common with. That's where that came from.
The only thing I would add to that is that on the tax implications, warehousing and distribution generally are fairly low.
Yeah.
Not to mention, it had no help with the sewer system.
No, nothing. And we're looking at a project that's going to generate maybe 300 million as opposed to 60, 70 million. So there's a large upside to having housing there as opposed to big boxes. I hope I answered that. Next.
We have Gary LaCroix.
Gary, are you there? Gary?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, fine. Could you give us your address for the record?
Here, 15 Mill Road, Littleton. I'm excited about this proposal as part of the master plan development group. I think this is in line with what was envisioned for what we, what this area could look like. And it sounds like a great synergistic opportunity in relationship to the sewer. So I did want to put in some good words for those who've worked on this, and I think this is a good opportunity. I hope we can take advantage of it. I'm going to trust that the Planning Board and those in the Planning Department are putting the right language in there. One knows I don't fully understand how all these things get written up and what you allow, you can and can't do. I know it's tricky. But I do want to, hopefully that we, you know, we're not writing this specific 2A developer so that some of those concerns of what unattended consequences avoided as to what goes there and what could happen in the future. As a transportation group, not a group, but a transportation person who's concerned with transportation issues, I do think Michael's comment from a few comments ago was good about making sure we have amenities that tie into the bicycle pedestrian accessibility. I also have some concern about the potential traffic impacts, and I know that any development will have to do a traffic study. I did have a question. I know how bad that intersection is during rush hour of trying to get, you know, from the west side of 119, say, onto the west side of Great Road, sorry, the west side of King Street, sorry, the west side of King Street, coming say from Kimball's going on to 495 onto 119. And if it would be possible to divert or potentially look at the option of running and, of some kind of route going through there through the development area so that cars could potentially go through that space and, you know, take a right turn towards 495 and towards Groton. Now, I know that would all be part of some kind of, you know, that also be looked at, but I didn't know to the what extent something like that, which would be a right-of-way going through there, would be allowable with any of the zoning language? Or, you know, if there was going to become some kind of route that was going to go through there would be within the purview of the zoning, or that would have to be addressed at a later date?
It's probably going to be addressed, it will be addressed when we go to this master plan special permit when it comes before us. We'll look at traffic, look at all those factors. Thank you, Gary.
Right. And there's nothing in the bylaw that precludes the board from being able to approve a roadway within the site?
Okay. Anyone else that hasn't?
I was also going to say, given the size of the project, it would likely also trigger MIPA reviews, which then the state would be looking specifically at traffic. So again, it's another bite of the apple evaluating these. Just a question as far as for the board. We do have Mike Zeldin with, assuming a follow-up comment. Just asking the board if they have...
Is he the only one left?
Correct.
One minute. I'd like to make you make your decision. I'd like, but I'd like to say.
Why don't we have somebody ride to the press and run inside, dude?
I don't know how loud I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Board. Chuck DeCoast, member of the Select Board, 609 Newtown Road. Just a, a lot of information's been out there tonight. And Mr. Martinari alluded to, and some folks brought up the big box or the Amazons. Byron happily stated that the tax revenue that we get out of a high bay warehouse is much lower than that that we might get out of a mixed-use development like this. A mixed-use development like this is exactly what the residents have told us they want. We went through a long process and a master plan, master planning exercise over a number of years where we had, anybody that wanted to be heard got to come out and go to charrettes and have their voice heard. And that's how we developed that plan. So overwhelmingly, the town voted to accept the master plan, and that's exactly what we're doing is following the master plan. The, in sitting in those meetings with the Planning Board and the town administrator and members of the Select Board, when different developers came in front of Heinz or Hudson Properties, it was actually, you're selling it short. There was over 125 bays. There was two different bays of 65, which is 130. So the amount of truck traffic that would come through the community would be, it would have a very detrimental impact on our downtown common, downtown and our common area. Not to mention the trucks would be coming by a couple of our schools, and that would be disastrous.
And that would, that would be disastrous. I also wanted to mention, since we were talking about the tax revenue that we get at a high bay warehouse or Amazon-type spaces, with, I, when IBM left, there was a huge sucking sound coming out of the Common, at least from a, from a financial standpoint, for the select board, for the, for our finance department, for the FinCom, and for our assessors office. And we were trying to figure out, how do we replace that, frankly? And there was, there was a lot of difficult conversations that we, that had to be had. And we, we were rolling up our sleeves and trying to figure out. We, we kind of, we're praying to the Hail Mary gods and we, we literally landed a Hail Mary. All the, all the developers that were coming before us were these truck terminal types of developers. And when LePoli companies came forth and asked us what we wanted and had knowledge of what was in our master plan and understood form-based code and was willing to listen to the community to put in what we want, that was, our prayers were answered, frankly. Just, just so people have an understanding, we were, we were bringing in about $1.8 million in tax revenue from the IBM property. To try to replace that revenue is, is not an easy task. We're doing what we can to try to introduce, you know, new businesses and, and through the economic development, reaching out to the state Mass Office of Business Development. All of those offices are aware, aware of LePoli companies. They've all worked with LePoli companies. So our likelihood of getting state funds, the 40R project was, was discussed. And there were, there were some funds that were going to be available to us, but nowhere on the, on the same magnitude of what the town of Littleton stands to benefit from, from mass work grants and the Mass Office of Business Development. And there's, there's so many opportunities that are being open to us and are going to help us to lighten the load on the, the residents of Littleton relative to the, the sewer project. I can't tell you how many times people have stopped me, whether it be at the grocery store or, or the gas station or whatnot, and said, "Why can't we do what they did in West Acton? Why can't we be more like Hudson? Why can't we be more like Downtown A or what they're doing and putting in restaurants?" Guys, this is the answer. Here we, here we have it. If we put the sewer in and we can do the sewer as a result of this project going in, I, I question whether or not we, we would be able to pass the sewer if this project doesn't go through. And we'll find out in just a, a few short weeks. So I, I do, obviously, I support it. Everything that we're doing here is in support of our master plan and is, is answering exactly what the residents have asked us to do. And so I, I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done in getting this forth. And I look forward to work with LePoli companies in getting what Littleton wants and revitalizing our Common.
Thank you, Mr. Coast. We're running a little late. I think we'll stop it at that.
Lower his hand.
Okay, thank you. So it's, I think we've heard everything. I think we've listened to the residents. We, it's time for us to close the hearing, but whether to support this and send it to town meeting floor.
I move to close the hearing.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, if someone wanna make a motion that we approve the, the rough draft of the zoning bylaw to bring it to town meeting floor, to let it be discussed at town meeting floor?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rough draft to bring it to the town meeting floor.
I second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. We've worked very hard at this.
Well, hold on a minute. That's a recommendation.
Yeah, and do you also support?
Yeah.
Make a recommendation to support?
For it to sit down in the floor.
I would suggest a separate motion on that.
I second.
We make the motion, we can support this at the town meeting floor? I'll second that. All those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we closed it, we voted it, and we support sending it to the floor. Again, I wanna thank everybody that's been, well, this is a long, quick, arduous journey to get there. Mr. Sanders, one real quick. We're running late here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna bring to the attention of the resident and the town developers. And I'd like to thank that I had something to do with it. When you're sleeping in the morning, I'm doing communication to send to our representatives. Littleton got $3,025,000 from the American Recovery Plan. And the state got $5,000.3 in the bank right now. So all the infrastructure that we have, like the sewer, we can submit requests specific for that. I tried to get them to earmark because I sent a letter to 10 of the representatives on Beacon Hill, including the government. But the Senate is not going to earmark anything. You're gonna have to submit your request to what it is that you want. So I just want Littleton to know, this is a golden opportunity with this project on this rezoning and the sewer to get money. And plus, on my program, straight out, you're not gonna have to have the business to ask you to help saw, to help launch the sewer program. So that is a great plus for Littleton.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Okay, so moving along, we have, unfortunately, a little late. We have an 8:15 special permit compliance across Weber Village. What do you wanna say? No, leave. Now it's time to leave. Oh, yeah, we do. In a few minutes. Do you want, do you wanna, you want five minutes? You want a couple? Go ahead. I think it was my share of will. Thought everybody believed in us. All right, you're saying it, I'm gonna...
My statement, everybody important is still here.
I guess, yeah. Thank you, Myron. I'm gonna leave now.
How are you, Joseph?
Chuckie? Thank you all. Thank you all. Hang in there.
Great to see you.
So please, how was your drive out?
It was not great. No, it was, traffic, so 95 was okay, 2 was okay. But 495 was all blocked up. And then I had, once we got off 495, it was wall-to-wall traffic for the next eight years.
Okay. You should just go down 2A. At the Rotary, just go down 2A. It's always...
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna interrupt briefly to say goodnight. Great job tonight. You all did well. The town was well-served, and unfortunately, Red Sox are down 2 to 0. But anyway, goodnight.
Thank you, Bob. Great, so we have a 7:15, Weber Village, special permit compliance. Do you guys wanna come up close? You wanna say?
Sure.
8:15.
Hold on.
8:15, excuse me.
Yeah.
More or less. How are you?
So do you wanna bring the history, Myron, or do you want me to do the history?
I'll, I'll start with, with the way I've been doing it. Let's see, in town council has been working with DHC, and I have both been working with DHC. The question came from the state on two affordable units. DHC has to approve the process, the outreach plan, the marketing for affordable units in order for the affordable units to go to lottery. My take on it was a hope to find a way to get us, get those units to lottery sooner than later. Where, which brings us to the meeting today. DHC was questioning whether the town feels that the developer had complied with condition 36. 36 is the one that says that units in Weber Village are to be marketed exclusively to seniors. Reaching back to the discussion that you had when you voted that special permit, you were hoping for the developer to market to Littleton seniors for a period. I don't remember if you said three months or six months. I forgot, go back a month with the tape. But it was something like that. And the question, the way I see it, the question for the board now is whether the developer has complied. They provided some marketing information and shared that sales for the units at Weber Village went extremely quickly as far as unusual development timeframes go. Did I miss anything, Greg?
No, that sounds right to me.
Okay. So the issue is whether you marketed them to seniors?
We did.
Exclusive.
Exclusively to seniors. So we marketed it through MLS. You got all the publications where it went to, Myron. I gave it to you. There's no category in MLS for exclusive senior marketing. We marketed it for over six months, designed for senior residential living. We've invited Myron and the town to come down there on several occasions, and nobody showed up. Can anybody up here tell me how many seniors have bought there or reside there?
So, and then the information that Matt shared with us did, I did put that on the agenda page. So you have the opportunity each month of that if you wanted to.
Let's, let's go back. How many times did I invite you down there, Myron?
That's not...
No, stop, 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 Michael, stop. How many times did I invite you down there?
I don't understand what that has to do with the conversation for the board.
Mr. Chairman.
How many times did I invite you down? What?
Can you please guide the questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you're, you're not running the meeting, but we are running.
How many seniors reside there now?
No, 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 you didn't get to ask the question. Stop!
What can we do to resolve this?
We wanna know what you did.
We gave you the information, what we did. I sat there and I handed it to you. That's what we did. We marketed from January till after the first unit sold in July of 2020. For six months, it was marketed, and that's what we used for the marketing. And I gave you that information. If that's not what it was, there's, there's no just marketing in MLS for seniors.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
May I please speak to the record as to what was submitted? What was submitted that we have from the field is an ad from Facebook identifying the three units remained, an email thread that was five pages long. There was a...
MLS listing from January.
From January through the first sale, it was marketed to seniors.
And an MLS listing for 29 Patricia and 33 Patricia, they said, "Designed with seniors in mind, but not age-restricted." And so as a planning board member, what I would have expected to see as marketing would be actual materials or online materials that had language and visuals that reflected seniors.
It did.
In senior publications and standalone marketing materials at senior locations. So that's what I, as a planning board member, would have expected.
Wait.
And so I do not believe that what they submitted, based on what I just said, was satisfactory to the intent of what was in the decision.
Okay. Do you wanna respond?
Yes. There was nothing giving to us from the planning board from the decision when we got it. We marketed it the way we marketed every single unit. We marketed over at Cooper, White Street, same way.
Stop right there. You sat there, and you told us you had seven seniors all set to buy from there.
And buy it.
And, and you know what you did? You, you decreased the amount of units and they increased the price mark, and the buyers left.
No, they did not.
So bullshit. That's not true.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. That's not true. All right. You, you told...
Okay, that's it. So, so...
You know what? You know what the units? We'll keep them, we'll rent them out as affordable units, de-restricted to affordable units, and we'll keep them, we'll rent them.
It doesn't...
We rented them. What do you wanna do? What do you wanna do?
You guys obviously disre...
How many seniors are living there now, Mark?
Five, I've been told. Five.
Right.
Five.
It's not designed for seniors.
That bylaw was not designed for seniors.
Excuse me, timeout. You went through a senior residential bylaw where you got a four-to-one density, then anybody else who don't...
You can't discriminate, Mark. You know that. You wrote it wrong to CDHC, Myron.
Wait a second.
You wrote the decision wrong.
Excuse me.
Stop!
You know what? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. But do, stop yelling, all right? Start conducting yourself with some...
Mr. Kennard had no problem selling all of them to seniors, all of them, all, 100%.
Right.
You're in violation of the bylaw.
I've already done it. I, I, we did it twice already. We did the same thing. We sold 16 to seniors, all to seniors. We sold 12 to seniors.
You came into the meeting that Myron and I had, said, "One guy from one place was interested in, told everybody, his family, and everybody who worked there, and everybody that bought him were all his friends." How was that marketing them to seniors? You told us that.
We marketed it to seniors from January 1st.
One guy came in and everybody else bought it from his company and his family. They're all, they're all relatives.
The neighbor next door bought one for his parents. They, the same...
That was it? How was that marketing it to seniors?
We advertised it.
Oh, you, you put it on Facebook.
MLS.
We put it in MLS, Mark.
Excuse me. May I, may I say something?
Go ahead.
I have been in marketing and advertising for 30 years. This is, excuse me, do not, do not interrupt me. Stop.
They need to stop.
Okay.
Or the consequences...
You asked, you asked our opinion.
I'm gonna step in a second, okay? This is supposed to be a public meeting.
Yes.
There is no yelling needed happening.
Exactly.
Okay? So that goes for you too, Lisa.
Yes, well, excuse me.
So please stop.
Yes, I would like to finish what I was saying.
Thank you.
Okay? No, I, I came here to resolve this. What, what can we do? What do you wanna, what can we want to do? May I finish? You asked a question. Do we feel that you did what you had been asked to do? I am saying, as a professional marketer, that in my opinion...
So am I.
In no way. This is, this shows absolutely no attempt to do a targeted marketing. Furthermore, I'd like to understand why there is a RE/MAX ad here that you submitted as part of your materials that has nothing to do with Weber Village. It talks about Cooper Farm. So, so those two ads can go out.
So stop! I own, I own the RE/MAX company. Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand that. But however, this ad says nothing about Weber Village, which is what we are here to discuss. It talks about Cooper Farm.
Every single property at Weber Village was put through MLS in, in the description, it states...
I'm done.
Designed for seniors.
Mr. Field, stop.
How many seniors are living there?
Five out of, nevermind, we're not even answering that. Okay, I'm just gonna poll, ask the board if they feel that, that the Fields have lived up to number 36 in our bylaw. Did they live up to it? Yes or no?
No.
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 No. We're gonna stop the meeting right now. We're gonna continue this in a month. You're gonna bring council in here, and we're gonna decide what we're gonna do moving forward.
What are you gonna do? We're gonna keep the units. We're gonna keep the units, and we're gonna rent them.
No, you're not.
You don't have a choice.
Yes, we are. You're in violation of your site plan, your special permit. You're in violation of all of it. You don't understand.
Right.
You don't understand. You're in violation. Bring council here. We will have council here. We're gonna reconvene this on June, November 4th. Is that what? That's what you, once we were determined that, we stopped, and you need to have council here present.
Okay.
No.
No problem. And we will decide what we're going to do. But you are in violation, site plan, special permit, marketing it to seniors, designing it for seniors.
So now you're in control of marketing for subdivisions.
You're all done with it. You told us right to your face.
And you said in the last meeting, we have nothing to hold us against us.
I didn't say that.
No leg to stand on. You have no leverage with what you use.
What do you have left there? You should have...
We, we have...[1775.36] We, we have...
We're done. You know what? We're done. I told you we're done. You come back, you come back with town council, and we'll discuss it on the next meeting, and then we'll decide what we're gonna do about it.
What are you gonna do?
Who you don't know.
Well, great. Wow.
No, we're done. We're done here.
Maybe you can...
We're done here.
$2,000 for each unit, too.
No, we're done. No. You didn't, you didn't live up to what we expected you to do.
We did live up to it.
No, you didn't. We gave you the benefit of the doubt. We didn't put it in writing because we trusted you, and you told us that you didn't.
We did what we were supposed to do.
We all agree that you haven't. So we're done. We're done here now. We're done here now. And we're not gonna hear the 8:30 A&R either.
Yeah, you are.
No, we're not.
Why would you not hear it?
We're all done.
No.
You get to hear the A&R. It's an A&R. It's approval not required.
Gentlemen?
Karen, please.
We need to stop, please.
Matthew, make a court date. That's what you ought to do.
We're all done.
So you're gonna tell me...
Two, Nine Air Road has nothing to do with Weber.
It most likely does.
On the agenda, we provided all the information to Myron.
Does the board want to hear Nine Air Road?
You don't have a choice.
Then I make a motion that we deny Nine Air Road.
So...
Yeah.
For what reason? For what reason, Mark, do you not get to hear Nine Air Road? What does one have to do with the other?
What?
Copy.
Wait a second. Town co...
They are two separate issues.
Please, Matt.
You need to provide, you're gonna deny the A&R plan. We need to come up with a basis to deny the A&R plan. If you deny it without having heard it or discussed it, I know I would be concerned that they're gonna file a appeal.
Oh, we would anyway. But we denied it before because we didn't feel the adequacy away because it was a gravel operation.
We divided pictures and all the documentation and showed it.
Mr. Chair, I also want to remind you that you, no one can speak in this meeting unless
you give them a key. Okay? So you can call on people, and otherwise, nobody should be speaking. Okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do we feel adequacy away for Nine Air Road considering that it's just been finished, they've just taken the gravel equipment out of there?
I do think that there's adequacy away. We've seen a plan that showed that it meets the standard. We've pushed this off while the gravel operation, which we all, you know, have opinions about, finished. And now it's apparent, whereas I think before it wasn't apparent how it was gonna turn out. Now it's apparent that it's gonna turn out. So I think we should marshal our efforts to Weber Village and just get this out of the way.
Okay. I would.
Well, I have, I have not seen the site, so I'm not really able to have an opinion about if it's finished or not. I haven't driven past there for a couple of weeks. But I, I don't, I think it is a separate issue.
Okay. Anna?
So, Mr. Chair, as between the two different agenda items, I believe that they are separate issues, and I do believe that it needs to be heard. And I still have concerns as to whether or not the site is ready for this kind of an A&R decision. But I think that's part of what we should discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Anna.
Do we have the plans? Okay.
I want to hear it on the...
Do you have, do you have an actual picture of it? I'll exit right now.
Council, these are the photos that the applicant provided.
I don't think that really shows the whole lack of a lot. It shows the stake. Frank, do you have a bigger, a picture of the whole area? So stop.
Yeah.
So that's what we're talking about. Those are the, those are the cuts in the side. Nobody's taking a look at those. We don't know if they're stable, if they're gonna stay, if they're gonna fall back down.
It's not a requirement for the planning.
You know what? We're discussing amongst ourselves. Okay? That's left side, right side. I don't even know what side that is.
That's the right side, Mark.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I drive by that every day. And one of my concerns is, on all sides, is that it's a very, very steep slope.
It's a three-to-one slope.
And how are we going to, how are they gonna prevent erosion and flooding? And, because it literally goes like this.
It's a bowl.
You should go and take a look at it, if you have it, because it's...
Okay. Do we have more?
That's back towards verifying for the pictures that you asked for with the stakes in for the driveway, Mark.
Okay.
So we're looking over Air Road?
You're looking towards verifying from the back of the property. That was where the large gravel pile was.
Okay. That's it for pictures?
Yeah, those five.
I think Janet sent you some more.
And we asked, we asked you to come up to the site while...
No, I was just wondering if you...
Oh, yeah, I read it like a couple times a week. And it has been wrapped up. This is, let's focus on this a little bit. So it's showing on the left, the way they're dealing with the slope as they have a garage under, and they grade up on each side of it. That's plausible. My understanding of our previous denial was that we could not verify that the access to the rear lot was reasonable. And I think we can look at the way the site is graded, that the access to the site would be reasonable. I mean, it's, do you know what the grade, you know, the, between Air Road and the...
Michael knows them all.
It's like, I don't know.
Air Road's at 222, and the back of the lot on Lot 3 is at 234.
That's the back house that you see on the lodge.
So the back, you know, the grade of the, where it starts out. So that's, that's a...
So almost 300 feet to the back, almost.
So, I mean, that's not a, it's not a bad grade. I'm with you guys. I think the two side lots are crappy lots. But that is notwithstanding with the NR, Chris, as I understand it, we cannot deny it based on the fact they're crappy lots. We can only deny it based on the access of the rear lot. Is that the case or not?
You can look at two things when considering whether to grant or deny an A&R plan. One is whether each lot on the plan has enough linear frontage to satisfy the minimum under the...
Which these do.
So then number two is, is there actual access for each lot from the public way?
So, which there is.
The question would be, this plan, I think, could you drive from the street to the, where you're gonna put the house, on the back pork chop block? If you could, then...
And initially, we denied it because it was not obvious that that was gonna be the case.
But those lots, that, those two driveways were previously approved.
Driveways have nothing to do with any...
Yeah, I wouldn't muddle it. We're just dealing with these lines on the bench. And so, so I appreciate, Mark, because I, at the time, I didn't...
I agree with you.
I didn't understand how you could not, you know, and then it was explained to me we have to do the access. So they, we have, we have put this off while they wrapped it up.
I agree with you. I agree. As it sits right now, and the fact that they flattened it out and got rid of it legally, while I'd like to turn it down because of everything else, I don't think we have a reason to turn it down.
I agree.
I think we have to, I do. I think he's laid back all the criteria we need for an A&R, and all my years of doing A&Rs, they've, do I think they're great lots? No. Do I think they're gonna have problems with the, with the side slopes and everything else? Yes, but I think, and he's gone now, I think that's gonna be fall on Ed's plate more than on ours. But they did what I asked them to do. They put the road in. They proved to us that they can access the back lot. I don't really see any reason. And I do, I, I was wrong. We shouldn't have muddled them and put them together. I agree, this is separate from standing on. I would think that we shouldn't do that, and we should approve it. So I will entertain a motion to approve the A&R lot as presented.
Mr. Chair, I have a question first.
Okay.
Of the applicant. So if we were to drive over there right now, is everything level?
Well, you drive up a little hill, but you can drive right in all the way to the back of the hill. Go right in.
There's a pile of lumber in the back corner, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, I think, I think they've satisfied what the issue was the last time you met.
And I would like to point out that initially, they didn't show the correct frontages. So, but now they do, so it's been rectified.
Okay. Okay. So, having heard anything else, I still entertain a motion to approve the A&R for, what is it?
11 and 13.
11 and 13 Air Road? Second. Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do you have a pen? Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adjourn? Anybody in favor of adjourn? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.